Eho' Malakaka, let us pray. Ike'ahuamanaloa, loving and gracious God, we humbly approach you with hearts full of gratitude as we gather here to bless and to uplift these, your servants, chosen by us, your people, to carry the kuleana of leadership within the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and within our lahui. So Lord, pour out your blessings upon them as they embark on this sacred journey. Grant them wisdom, the wisdom of our kupuna who walked before us with steadfast aloha, humility, and courage. Let their decisions reflect the pono that sustains us, the aloha that unites us, and the strength that uplifts us. We ask that you guide our trustees as you have guided our ancestors across the vast moana. Be the star that lights their path in moments of darkness. Be the anchor that holds them steady in times of uncertainty. Reward their faithfulness with the assurance that through their hands your divine purposes are fulfilled and through their services the lahui thrives. Ike'ahuamanaloa, you are the Creator and the source of all mana, the Alpha and the Omega, the beginning and the end, and we acknowledge and praise you for this day, for this moment, for this kuleana that has been placed before us, and we trust in your divine guidance. Grant these leaders the examples of our Lord Jesus Christ who did not think of himself first but gave himself for the well-being of all. Let them reflect this selflessness in their service. May they carry the kuleana of their roles not as a burden but as a privilege and a calling, the calling that you gave to them knowing that through their work your love and justice has brought life. Makainoa ike'aku'a as we join together.
Me'kamahalunui ya o ike'aku'a i ko Maalama ana pakahi'ua ma'akoko'oe akuko me'ne'i no'na kahu'a i va'ika ho'no'ho'ano'ola'ko ke'iya'ava ke'a'ne'i. Ke ho'ano'ako'ne'i ma'akoo ya'o'e ke' mililani'ia ho'sanaka'ne'i ma'akoo ya'o'e. O'i'a'eku'no'ha'aha'anei ko ma'akoo maupo'o ke' onani'aka'ne'i ma'akoo ya'o'e. Ike'iya'va'ki'eva'ua ike'evanani mahalo ya'o'e ike'ku'. Makainoa ka'oke'iki hiva hiva o Yesu Christo ka'ule'opole. Amen. Ololokaka'eno'ho'ilalo.
Ena o'iivi olino mai kahipaya kahipae hava'i nui o ke'ave'a ini ihau'okahele'ani. Ke' o'iivi aloha'nu'i i'eku'ka'akopo'ali'eka'ua'ana mana'aa'apao ke'iya'vah'i Halepule la'ua o Central Union Church. Na o'iivi olino nona ke' aloha'nu'i mai kahipaya kahipae ko'kakou lahui aina aloha. Aloha'nu'i kakou'wa pa'ula.
It is with great aloha we welcome you today, and we do want to acknowledge several guests that are here, beginning with former governors John Wahe'e, Linda Lingle, and Neil Abercrombie, aloha. Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke from our first congressional district, Congressman Ed Case, and Deputy Jackie Conant from our second congressional district representing Congresswoman Jill Tokura, Communications Director Christine Uyeno. From the county of Maui, Maui Mayor Richard Bisson Jr. and Councilwoman Kiani Rollins Fernandez. From the city and county of Honolulu, Council Chair Tommy Waters and Vice Chair Esther Kia'a'ina. From the county of Kauai, Council Chair Mel Raposo, Vice Chair Kipu Kai'ku'ali'i, and Councilman Bernard Cavalli Jr. From the Hawaii State Senate, Honorable Senators Loraine Inouye, Joyce San, Buenaventura, Angus McKelvey, Lynda Coit, Les Ihara, Henry Aquino, Kurt Favella, Samantha Decourt, and of course Jared Ke'ho Kalole, aloha ena Keni'ko. From the House of Representatives of Hawaii, Kristin Kahaloa, Mahina Poi'Poi', Daniel Holt, Garner Shimizu, Diamond Garcia, Kanani Souza, Darius Kila, and Emmy Peruzzo, aloha'nu'i. To newly appointed President of the University of Hawaii, Wendy Henzel. And finally, with the United States Department of Defense Brigadier General Michael Zoldorff of the United States Air Force Pacific Air Forces, Major General Lance Okamura, Deputy Commanding General of the United States Army Pacific. Major General Marcus Evans, Commanding General of the 25th Infantry Division United States Army Hawaii. And Major General Stephen Logan, Adjutant General of the Hawaii National Guard, as well as all Department Directors, Board of Regents of the University of Hawaii, community leaders, and our aloha to our lahui, aloha'nu'i kakou'wa pa'ula. It gives me great pleasure to introduce to you our Kapo'ohana, CEO of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, Stacy Ke'alohalani-Ferreira.
It's a beautiful day for a celebration. I was so excited for today to be able to welcome you to this special and auspicious occasion for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and for our Board of Trustees. And with all important occasions, there's always an order to things. And I wanted to welcome into this Halepule our ali'i. You may have noticed them, or at least their portraits anyway, that we held space for them because it's important that we recognize that they are truly our beacon of hope, aloha, and pono. They also serve as a reminder of kuleana to our trustees, what it means to be an o'iivi servant leader. I also want to welcome our royal societies, our o'iivi leaders, our elected officials, our dignitaries and special guests, ohana, nahua, ka'lahui Hawaii. Over the next hour, we're going to immerse ourselves in culture, ceremony, and commitment. However, grounding us in today's celebration is the gravitas of the wayfinding kuleana that our trustees are entrusted with, navigating us towards ea, self-determination, self-governance. We have our sail plan, the Constitution, Hawaii revised statutes, manai mauli'ola, and we have our nine navigators who will guide us to achieve ea. They will not only ensure that we stay the course but also course correct when we need to so that we'll never be lost. I'd like to share a conversation between two prolific navigators as they spoke about their unprecedented and historic sail from Hawaii to Tahiti, their purpose to raise the islands from the ocean. I'm going to read it as it was written by Nainoa Thompson because I believe that the message is so profound that it should not be paraphrased. He writes, "In November of 1979, Mao and I went to observe the sky at La'Nai Lookout. We would leave for Tahiti soon. I was concerned, more like afraid. It was an awesome challenge." Then he asked, "Can you point to the direction of Tahiti?" And I pointed. Then he asked, "Can you see the island?" I was puzzled by the question. Of course, I could not actually see the island. It was over 2,200 miles away. But the question was a serious one. I had to consider it carefully. Finally, I said, "I cannot see the island, but I can see the image of the island in my mind." Mao said, "Good. Don't ever lose that image or you will be lost." Trustees, me'ke'aku'a, bless and guide you as you raise the islands out of the sea. E'ola ma'ula'ana ka'lahui Hawaii. E'ola, e'ola, e'ola. Let the celebration begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinct honor to introduce the newly elected Hawaii Island Trustee and Chair of the Board of Trustees, the esteemed Ka'ali'i Kahele. Following him, we recognize our distinguished and re-elected trustee, trustee Dan Ahuna, representing the islands of Kauai and Ni'ihau. Trustee Luana Alapa, representing the islands of Molokai and La'Nai. And trustee Dr. Ke'li'i Akina, serving as trustee-at-large. Please join me in welcoming them with a warm aloha. We now invite the ohana of our trustees elected in November of 2024 to join their trustee for the presentation of the lehulu. These regal and symbolic lehui crafted with care and precision by Hakuhulu Kavika Lam Nel'mira embody Hawaii's royal heritage and profound cultural significance. In Kavika's own words, "When I think about aina aloha, I think about maalama. An essential element of maalama, aina, is recognizing the need for balance." The balance is deeply tied to the concept of pono, reminding us that harmony is essential in fulfilling our kuleana. Trustees, as you receive your lehulu, may its mana inspire and guide you in your sacred kuleana to our lahui, ensuring that the essential balance needed to lead with wisdom and aloha. I'd like to share a conversation between two prolific navigators as they spoke about their unprecedented and historic sail from Hawaii to Tahiti. Their purpose: to raise the islands from the ocean. I'm going to read it as it was written by Nainoa Thompson because I believe that the message is so profound that it should not be paraphrased. He writes, "In November of 1979, Maui and I went to observe the sky at La Ni Lookout. We would leave for Tahiti soon. I was concerned, more like afraid. It was an awesome challenge." Then he asked, "Can you point to the direction of Tahiti?" And I pointed. Then he asked, "Can you see the island?" I was puzzled by the question. Of course, I could not actually see the island. It was over 2,200 miles away. But the question was a serious one. I had to consider it carefully. Finally, I said, "I cannot see the island, but I can see the image of the island in my mind." Maui said, "Good. Don't ever lose that image, or you will be lost." Trustees, me kea kua, bless and guide you as you raise the islands out of the sea. E'ola maoloa ana kalahui Hawaii. E'ola, e'ola, e'ola. Let the celebration begin.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's my distinct honor to introduce the newly-elected Hawaii Island Trustee and Chair of the Board of Trustees, the esteemed Kaila'i Kahale. Following him, we recognize our distinguished and re-elected trustees, trustee Dan Ohuna, representing the islands of Kauai and Ni'oh. Trustee Luana Alapa, representing the islands of Molokai and La Ni. And trustee Doctor Keili'i Akina, serving as trustee-at-large. Please join me in welcoming them with a warm aloha. We now invite the ohana of our trustees elected in November of 2024 to join their trustee for the presentation of the lehulu. These regal and symbolic leh crafted with care and precision by Hakuhulu Kavika Lam Nelmeira embody Hawaii's royal heritage and profound cultural significance. In Kavika's own words, "When I think about aina aloha, I think about Maalama. An essential element of Maalama, aina is recognizing the need for balance. The balance is deeply tied to the concept of pono, reminding us that harmony is essential in fulfilling our kuliana. Trustees, as you receive your lehulu, may its mana inspire and guide you in your sacred kuliana to our lahui, ensuring that the essential balance needed to lead with wisdom and aloha." Ladies and gentlemen, it's my privilege to present the esteemed trustees who serve with dedication and aloha, representing the island of Maui, trustee Carmen Hululunzi. Representing the island of Oahu, trustee Kaleihina Akaka. And joining them are our at-large trustee Ki'oni Souza and John Wahehe IV. Mahalo and aloha to our leaders for their unwavering commitment to the lahui.
As our trustees remain, "Inaho'a makamakai na'ao hana aloha aina. Inapoei hano hanoi ke kuliana o kalahui." To our distinguished guests, family, friends, and community members, aloha nui kako aloha. Today, we gather in this sacred space to welcome and install our newly-elected trustees to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And these leaders, chosen by us, the lahui, are entrusted to Maalama the resources, to Maalama the rights and the well-being of Kanaka Hawaii. This is the kuliana of great significance rooted in aloha aina and pono that guide our people. So the Office of Hawaiian Affairs was created to uplift and empower the native Hawaiian people, and today, we celebrate with those who have been chosen. And so my charge to you as the trustees, and look at me, you're making me nervous. Look forward. "Ena kahu o lahui." To the trustees of Oha, the lahui has placed its trust in you to serve with pono, with aloha and ike kupuna. You are the caretakers of our culture, the caretakers of our economy, the caretakers of our spiritual resources, entrusted to protect the rights and advance the well-being of us as native Hawaiians. So in the presence of Kea kua, God almighty, I charge you now to Maalama ike kuliana o kalahui, to protect and to advocate for the rights of our people and our aina. In the presence of Kea kua, I charge you now to ho'oko'i ika pono, to make decisions with integrity and with fairness, guided by our Hawaiian values and our ancestral wisdom. In the presence of Kea kua, kulia ikanu'u, strive for excellence in everything you do to preserve, to perpetuate, and to advance the goals of this lahui. And in the presence today of Kea kua, we charge you to ho'olohe Maalama, to listen deeply to all the voices of our community, ensuring that all perspectives are heard and all perspectives are always respected. This kuliana is not yours alone. It is rooted in the mana of our entire lahui. So may you honor this trust in every action, in every word, and in every decision. And so our new chair, our Luna Ho'okele Nui, our distinguished, Kai Kahale, you are charged with leading this board with vision, with strength, and always with humility. You are the steward of our collective mission, the one who ensures unity and direction. Lead with the wisdom of our kupuna, of which your father has always been that leading light in the island of Hawaii and in your ohana, as well as in all of us who come from Hawaii Island. And so always remember that the aloha of our people begins with you and your ohana. And with respect to our vice-chair, our Ho'opee Luna, my ohana, your role is to ensure stability and to support our chair. You are the guardian of continuity. You are the guardian of stepping in with the leadership that is needed to ensure that the work of our board, which I know you can and always have done, remains steadfast and pono, because that is what has always been in your heart. And to our board at large, you represented the first voices of our lahui. From the mountain to the ocean, from Ma'aka to Makai, your kuliana is to bring ike kupuna, ancestral knowledge, to bring traditional knowledge, and to also bring ike ho', new knowledge, contemporary and innovative understandings and ideas into your meetings, to the table, ensuring that every decision is rooted in the aspirations and the needs of our people. And so I ask you to repeat after me. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties to Maalama the resources and the rights of native Hawaiians, to uphold these values of pono, aloha, and Maalama aina, and to serve with humility, courage, and wisdom. This I pledge, for the betterment of our lahui and for the betterment of future generations. Epule kako, let us pray. "E kea kua, e alaka'i aku koumana yala kou. E Maalama aku koumana i kaikala e a'o. E aku'n kou na'ao yala kou. E ho'opale aku kou lima yala kou. E kuiku'i aku kou ala yala kou. E pale aku kou pa'kaua yala kou. E ki'a'i aku'n kou mau anela yala kou." Oh God, may your strength guide these trustees. May your power preserve them. May your wisdom instruct them. May your hand protect them. May your way direct them. May your shield always defend them. And may your angels guard over them and their ohana. And may Christ be over us all. "Makainoi kamako'olani'a, maki'akeki'a, mika'uhaniha'ma lili'a, m'akopakahi'apau." Amen. Mahalo nui.
Our kapo'ohana will present their leh mileh to our kahu vai vai, noting that we will not put a fresh leh over a lehulu. So they will receive their leh and then present it to their families.
Ikanu'u o kale valanila. Ai ma'luhi'a nona kaua kau. E'olo Hawaii ku'hai na'aloha. E ku'la'ue vivu'ole. Ua'ma'oke'oke'a ina ika pono. Ua'ma'oke'oke'a ina ika pono." "Eve lo ma'oloa ku'hai aloha. Ikanu'u o kale valanila. Ai ma'luhi'a nona kaua kau. E'olo Hawaii ku'hai na'aloha. E ku'la'ue vivu'ole. Ua'ma'oke'oke'a ina ika pono. Ua'ma'oke'oke'a ina ika pono. Ua'ma'oke'oke'a ina ika pono."
"Kialoa aina'ao makamakai keia aina aloha. Mai kapii'ne ika la'i puka'e jae jae kamoku velu'a'ilila o mano kalanipo. O'ao'no'o kahi'ausua no' Maui no'ia kama. Hemo'opuna au no' kameni kahulumea lanilanzi. O'puka'ome kalana kilano e'ala ka'i e'aku'olea. O'kahe'ekili, he'ali'ipuni lele ka'vo'ia. Wa'alele no' aina paliki'i e'ki'aloa. E'elima ha'aneli, a'io'no ha'aneli kapoei ke'ke'ke'ke. Wa'alele ka'va'kamo'io ka'ekilia' puni o Maui. O'ke'ka'i puni loa ka'ekili kamai'ka. O'kamai'ka ka'ana puni le'ale aloha. Aloha."
And I'm supposed to follow that? Give me a break. Oh my kako. It's so nice to see all of you. You know, from Proverbs 29:18, I wanted to begin my little mana'o. It says, "Where there is no vision, people perish; but blessed is he who keeps the law." So today, on this momentous occasion, momentous, I thought I was going to make it wrong, but you know, I come from Hilo and I went to St. Joseph Elementary School, and I had the word, I couldn't spell that word in elementary school. And so Sister Mary Edwards made me write it on the chalkboard five days in a row, 100 times. You guys ever remember doing that? They don't do that anymore, don't they? That's horrible. Anyway, this momentous occasion, as we stand before the investiture of this Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees, this is more than a ceremony. It is a call to action, a covenantal leadership grounded in kuliana, in aloha, and in aina. So I just wanted to talk about three things. Eliminate, educate, and elevate. Eliminate, in 1 Peter 2:1, "Therefore rid yourself of all malice and all deceit, hypocrisy, envy, and slander of any kind." Because as lahui, we join together, we don't separate, we don't compartmentalize. So the first step is serving our community by eliminating barriers that stop us from progressing as a people. It may be systematic inequalities, it may be divisiveness, it may be any practices or policies that hinder the flourishing of our lahui. As trustees, your kuliana, as well as ours as lahui, is to examine not only the external structures, but also inside closed doors, because that's where the hakaka can come from. Just as Christ taught us to cast aside sin and anything that burdens our spiritual walk, so too must we as leaders remove the harms of well-being of ourselves and of each other. So I created, because I can, "Bakahu makua kane olelo no'eao." Hey, all of you can do that, because if it's for the betterment of all of us, we should all be doing that. So this is something that I put down, it says, "I'ole ke kuliana e kau'i'a. Lilo ke alaka'i'a na i'noho'a li'i ho'opuni puni." And it means, "Where there is no accountability, leadership turns into dictatorship. Where there is no accountability, leadership turns into dictatorship." And who is keeping you in check? You know, I had a mentor, and I still have mentors whom I walk with. I have a mentor that I walk with every week, and you know what that person does? Is that person is not one of the brothers, it's the person that keeps me in check, to get me off of the high horse and to put me back on the ground so that I can talk, I can walk, I can eat, and I can pray, and I can be a part of those that I'm supposed to be serving. Not leading, you lead by serving. The second thing is, my mother, who's sitting here, that I brought here to live with me on Saturday from Hilo, she doesn't like it over here because this is the big town. My kuliana is to my ohana. So even when she is not so happy here in Honolulu, this is where I live now, and so I must take care of my mama, as all of you have to take care of those close to you. Even when they don't like you, take care of them, because that's Hawaiian culture. We take care of those who took care of us, and that's what generational culture does for each other all the time. The second, educate. In Hosea 4:6, "My people are destroyed because of the lack of knowledge." Education is the cornerstone of empowerment. To educate is to uplift, to educate is to awaken, to educate is to guide. As trustees, your role is to ensure that knowledge of the culture, of the history, of the language, of the rights, it's not just about preserving, but it's about disseminating it widely through the perpetuation of all of our practices in public. One example is, I think it was like three or four weeks ago, there was a non-native woman who spoke out at our county council meeting that our Hawaiian language was dead. And I know that that thing bombed all over the social media, and our people was yelling and screaming. But guess what? She's not from here. Our job is to educate those, because you see, we keep thinking it's the us and them, but they're always going to be them if we treat them as them. I invited them to my Halepule'a kaua'ha'o. Never come, but that's okay, I invited, because the thing is... He e lima haaneli, aꞌi oono haaneli kapua i kee kiꞌi e kiꞌi e. Wa lele kaꞌava ka moꞌio ka i kilia punio Maui. O ke ka i puniloa ka i kilika maika. O ka maika kaꞌana punileale aloha. Aloha.
And I'm supposed to follow that? Give me a break. Ohu mai Kako. It's so nice to see all of you. You know, from Proverbs 29:18, I wanted to begin my little manao. It says, "Where there is no vision, people perish; but blessed is he who keeps the law." So today, on this momentous occasion... Momentous, I thought I was gonna make it wrong, but you know, I come from Hilo and I went to St. Joseph Elementary School. And I had the word, I couldn't spell that word in elementary school. And so Sister Mary Edwards made me write it on the chalkboard five days in a row, 100 times. You guys ever remember doing that? They don't do that anymore, don't they? That's horrible. Anyway, this momentous occasion, as we stand before the Investiture of this Office of Hawaiian Affairs Board of Trustees, this is more than a ceremony. It is a call to action, a covenantal leadership grounded in kuliana, in aloha, and in aina. So I just wanted to talk about three things. Eliminate, educate, and elevate. Eliminate, in 1 Peter 2:1. "Therefore rid yourself of all malice and all deceit, hypocrisy, envy, and slander of any kind." Because as alohui, we join together, we don't separate, we don't compartmentalize. So the first step is serving our community by eliminating barriers that stop us from progressing as a people. It may be systematic inequalities, it may be divisiveness, it may be any practices or policies that hinder the flourishing of our alohui. As trustees, your kuliana, as well as ours as alohui, is to examine not only the external structures, but also inside closed doors. Because that's where the hakaka can come from. Just as Christ taught us to cast aside sin and anything that burdens our spiritual walk, so too must we as leaders remove the harms of well-being of ourselves and of each other. So I created, because I can, "Va kahu Makua Kane, olelo no eau." Hey, all of you can do that. Because if it's for the betterment of all of us, we should all be doing that. So this is something that I put down, it says, "I ole ke kuliana e ka ua ia, lilo ke alaka i ana, i noho aliꞌi hoꞌopuni puni." And it means, "Where there is no accountability, leadership turns into dictatorship." Where there is no accountability, leadership turns into dictatorship. And who is keeping you in check? You know, I had a mentor, and I still have mentors whom I walk with. I have a mentor that I walk with every week. And you know what that person does? Is that person is not one of the brothers. It's the person that keeps me in check, to get me off of the high horse and to put me back on the ground so that I can talk, I can walk, I can eat, and I can pray, and I can be a part of those that I'm supposed to be serving. Not leading, you lead by serving. The second thing is, my mother, who's sitting here, that I brought here to live with me on Saturday from Hilo. She doesn't like it over here because this is the big town. My kuliana is to my ohana. So even when she is not so happy here in Honolulu, this is where I live now. And so I must take care of my mama. As all of you have to take care of those close to you. Even when they don't like you, take care of them. Because that's Hawaiian culture. We take care of those who took care of us. And that's what generational culture does for each other all the time. The second, educate. In Hosea 4:6, "My people are destroyed because of the lack of knowledge." Education is the cornerstone of empowerment. To educate is to uplift, to educate is to awaken, to educate is to guide. As trustees, your role is to ensure that knowledge of the culture, of the history, of the language, of the rights, it's not just about preserving, but it's about disseminating it widely through the perpetuation of all of our practices in public. One example, it's, I think it was like three or four weeks ago, there was a non-native woman who spoke out at our county council meeting that our Hawaiian language was dead. And I know that that thing bombed all over the social media. And our people was yelling and screaming. But guess what? She's not from here. Our job is to educate those. Because you see, we keep thinking it's the us and them. But they're always going to be them if we treat them as them. I invited them to my Halepulea Ko Aia Ho. Never come, but that's okay, I invited. Because the thing is, no, because the thing is, in order to educate, they have to know. But if we are not open to showing people who we are, what we are, and what we stand for, then of course they're not going to know. They're not going to know our language. Because sometimes even our own people don't want to hear our language because they say, "Oh, 85% of us don't even understand what you're talking about." So it's the same thing as when I was trying to teach my kid how to swim. I never put him in the kiddie pool, I would just dump him in the ocean. Because why? As mentors, as trustees, as people, you're not gonna let them die. You're gonna be there to jump in, but we have to throw them in the deep so that they can become stronger in character. You have to jump in the deep end, even when our people are yelling and screaming at you. Because that is your kuliana, is to take us to places we've never been. I mean, our CEO just taught us about what Nainoa was talking about with Maupialu. You have to vision something that is not there in order for it to manifest. And if we do not do that at this level, it will never happen in our homes. So let us always educate. And the very last thing, elevate. In James 4:10, "Humble yourselves before the Lord, and he will lift you up." The ultimate goal of leadership is to elevate, to lift others higher than they thought they could ever lift themselves. You know, when I was a record producer, my job wasn't to record somebody the way they are. It was to record what they are supposed to become. To take them to places where they've never been before, to stretch them to a place. And then as they become that, then to take them to a higher level. We are here to first eliminate all of this hakaka. And then we are here to educate ourselves as well as those around us. And then the last thing we do is we lift each other up. In Matthew 23:11, "The greatest among you will be your servant." In doing so, Christ tells us elevation is not about power or prestige, it's about service. And let your decisions reflect the highest aspirations of our people, grounded in integrity and aloha. So I leave you with this one story. So in one point of this baseball game with nine-year-olds, this coach pulled one of his players aside. And he asked the little boy, "Do you understand what cooperation is, what a team is?" "Yes, Coach," replied the little boy. "Do you understand that what matters is whether we win or lose together as a team?" The little boy nodded with affirmation. So, the coach continued, "I'm sure you know when an out is called, you shouldn't argue, you shouldn't curse the umpire, or call him bad words. Do you understand all of that?" Once more, the little boy nodded in agreement. The coach continued, "Okay, and when I take you out of the game so that another boy gets to have a chance to play, it is not a dumb decision, or that me, the coach, is stupid for doing that? Do you understand?" "No, Coach," replied the little boy. "I understand exactly what you mean." Then the coach said, "Good. Now go over there in the stands and go explain that to your tutu." Because a lot of times, we are doing the hard work and people don't know the end game because they don't see the vision, because we haven't finished creating the vision to manifest the vision. We have to trust those that we put to leadership roles to do the job for us as the alohui. So to our tutus, to our mamas and our daddies, no complain until you see what they can do. And they will do great things because we put them in there, because God has put them in there. Amen.
Au he valeho, e ke aloha, e kamea, ho eha, eha huaai. Navai e ole, ke aloha, ahe vai vai, uasila uaya. Au he kahu kahu, ka uaana, ke e pili mai, lea u ka va hine hui. Ai a kahu hoa, e kahuai. O ka iivi hulula, o ka nahele. Imi aui aho, e ke aloha, mana pai a, aala, Ai he lao, inano valei hone, ho i mai no ka ua e pili. Ho i mai no ka ua e pili. Ho i mai no ka ua e pili. E pili, e pili, e pili.
Mahalo Nui Kumu Na Kua Silva. Chad, Kaika, Koko, aloha Nui. Me minava keia e hehe'a kouitouka kumakou no na ho'omalo. Ke keena kulana hauai ka hu vai vai. Oi oi.
Ano ai ki aloha. Enamamo oheno okapai aina aloha nei aloha Nui Kako.
Aloha.
As chairperson of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, it is my honor to welcome you to our 2025 OHA Investiture Ceremony. Whether you are, or were present at the very first Investiture at Iolani Palace in 1981, or are joining us for the first time today, your presence humbles us. It reflects a renewed commitment to the critical work ahead, and for that, we are deeply, deeply grateful. Looking across this gathering, I see both familiar faces and new faces. And this reminds me that OHA's mission is ever-evolving, strengthened by steadfast supporters and fresh perspectives. Today marks a new beginning, a time of renewed focus and determination. And everyone here plays a vital role in shaping our future and driving our success. Before I continue, I want to extend my deepest mahalo to our incredible staff. Their tireless efforts over the last past several months have made this event possible. And under the guidance of Chair Emerita Carmen Hulu Lindsay, they have created an outstanding Investiture program. Their dedication lies at the heart of everything that OHA does, all of OHA's work. And we are truly fortunate to have them. Mahalo Nui Loa for all that you do. Can we give them a round of applause? So as we gather here today, I encourage us to reflect on two fundamental questions. What makes the Office of Hawaiian Affairs so essential? And why is its work so important to all of us? The Office of Hawaiian Affairs holds a unique and indispensable place in Hawaii's government. Established in 1978 through a constitutional amendment ratified by the people of Hawaii, OHA is a co-equal partner with the executive, legislative, and judicial branches of our state government. This framework is distinct, found only here in Hawaii, and reflects the deep respect and recognition of native Hawaiians as the indigenous people of these islands. OHA's mission, rooted in advocacy, resource management, stewardship, and empowerment, sets it apart as a beacon of self-determination and cultural preservation entrusted with the kuliana to uplift native Hawaiians. And our kuliana at OHA is monumental. We are charged with stewarding resources to advance the health, education, housing, and economic opportunities of our people. Beyond this, we are guardians of something less tangible, but equally essential, the pride and spirit of our alohui. And as your chairperson, I pledge to champion both. This moment in Hawaii's history is pivotal. We face extraordinary challenges, rising costs of living, environmental pressures, and the fight to protect our sacred lands and waters. Native Hawaiians are consistently overrepresented among the homeless, the houseless, the uninsured, the underinsured, those suffering from chronic diseases and disproportionate incarceration. Yet within these challenges lie immense opportunities to assert leadership, malama or aina, and ensure future generations thrive in their ancestral homeland. As we move forward, my priorities as chairperson of the board are clear. Housing for our people. Too many families throughout Hawaii are struggling to find affordable homes. OHA must play a role, it wants to play a role, in a whole-of-government approach to create workforce housing solutions that honor our values and meet our community needs. This legislative session, with the support of our governor, our lieutenant governor, our legislative senators and representatives, and community partners, we will advance workforce housing solutions in Kaka'aku Makai. Education as empowerment. Our keiki deserve opportunities to learn in ways that connect them to their culture, their aina, and their potential to lead. OHA will invest in programs that instill Hawaiian knowledge, perpetuate ka'ulelo Hawaii, the Hawaiian language, and empower our youth through civic engagement. I truly believe that indigenous wisdom can inspire contemporary solutions, providing our keiki with the tools to address modern challenges while staying grounded in these values and traditions of our kupuna. Economic justice and sustainability. Native Hawaiians must have access to opportunities for building wealth and stability while safeguarding our resources and prioritizing malama aina. This includes fostering economic systems that align with our cultural values and ensuring that responsible development benefits native Hawaiian communities directly. Self-determination and indigenous rights. As the indigenous people of Hawaii, native Hawaiians have the inherent right to self-determination. OHA should stand firm in safeguarding indigenous rights and advancing restorative justice for alohui in all spaces where decisions are made. This requires amplifying native Hawaiian voices in governance and ensuring policies are rooted in the values and aspirations of the Hawaiian community. The future of military leased lands. OHA will take a significantly more proactive role and serve as a leader on the future of ceded and public trust lands leased to the United States military, specifically at Puhakoloa and Makua Valley. In the coming months, OHA and our Board of Trustees look forward to robust engagement with US Indopacom, US Army Pacific, and US Army Garrison Hawaii on their land retention efforts. OHA's leadership on this issue will ensure that any outcome proportionally addresses the historic injustices, including the alienation of native Hawaiians from our lands, while also recognizing the critical importance of the national security of the United States. Unity and healing. The strength of our alohui lies in our ability to come together. OHA internally and externally must be a space where our people feel heard, respected, and supported. By fostering mutual understanding and collaboration, we can build bridges across differences and create a future rooted in shared purpose and aloha. However, we must also confront a pressing challenge that for some time now, OHA has been facing a crisis of relevance. How do we assert our place at the table? How can we lead boldly and create meaningful, impactful progress for native Hawaiians? How do we connect with our beneficiaries? These are questions we must answer, not through memos or white papers or strategic plans, but through visible action in our communities. But going into our communities as elected leaders in 2025 is not easy. Civic trust has eroded in Hawaii and beyond, exacerbated by global disruptions, rampant disinformation, and caustic politics. Yet, we have a powerful precedent to guide us. After the illegal overthrow of the Hawaiian Kingdom, leaders of Ka Hui Aloha Aina and Hui Kala Aina rose to preserve Hawaiian rose to preserve Hawaiian independence. Leaders like Joseph and Emma Navahi, David Kalau Okalani, among many others, traversed every corner of our pai aina, door-to-door, on horseback, and on foot, inspiring thousands to sign petitions opposing annexation. They carried with them the fervent hope of people who refused to yield, collecting over 38,000 signatures, 21,000 of them known as the Ku'e Petition, a resounding majority of the native Hawaiian population at the time. Their actions remind us that even in unprecedented times, the resolve of our kupuna was unshakable. Today, OHA must embrace that same spirit. We must transform from a passive institution into an engaged, visible agent of progress. We will not only advance the well-being of native Hawaiians, but also steward the public trust, the embodiment of Hawaii's sovereignty for all the people of these islands. Now, none of this work can be done alone. It will take collaboration with our trustees, our county, state, and federal partners, our ali'i trusts, our nonprofit organizations, our NHOs, our military leaders, and most importantly, the people we serve, all of you. We look forward to working with you, learning from you, listening to you, and acting with integrity, humility, transparency, and aloha. Finally, I want to extend my heartfelt mahalo to those who have come before us, the trustees and CEOs who laid the foundation for OHA's establishment and growth. We walk in your footsteps, we stand on your shoulders, and we would not be here without your vision and dedication. Together, we, the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, are the stewards of our culture, our heritage, and shared future. Guided by the wisdom of our ancestors, we are ready to embrace the challenges ahead with aloha, humility, and unwavering determination. And so I invite each of you to join us on this journey, on this collective effort, bringing your energy, your ideas, your passion, and aloha to help fulfill the promise of OHA's mission to better the conditions of native Hawaiians. Mahalo Nui Loa for being here today and for your steadfast support. Together, we can rise to meet the challenges ahead and create a Hawaii where every keiki has the opportunity to thrive, where our aina is protected, and where our culture continues to flourish. Let us embark on this new chapter with strength, with unity, and with purpose together. Emalama pono Kako, mahalo.
As we come to the close of our program approaching the closing kule, the melee, ekolu meanui, will be the recessional melee, and I kindly ask that all of our family here and guests remain in your stations so that the Royal Guard can escort our Ahahui Ka'uhu Manu Haleonali'i and the Association of Hawaiian Civic Club members to exit, followed immediately by our trustees or kahu vai vai. Mahalo Nui, kahu Kenneth Makua Kani.
Eho malu Kako. Eke'aku manaloa. As we conclude this beautiful ceremony, we ask your blessings upon these newly invested trustees. Equipped, oh Lord, with every good gift, with every ounce of wisdom, and with every measure of courage, they will need to fulfill their sacred kuleana. Guide them as shepherds of this Lahui, tending to the needs of our native Hawaiian people with compassion and with humility. By your eternal covenant, strengthen their resolve to do your will, working in them, and with them, and through them, to which will be pleasing to your sight. And for all who have gathered here today, leaders, community members, ohana, may your peace, which surpasses all understanding, go with us as we leave this sacred space. Unite us in aloha, empower us with malama aina, and inspire us to lift each other as one Lahui. And we also give thanks for the meal that has been lovingly prepared for us. Bless the hands that have grown, harvested, and prepared this food. Let it nourish our bodies, our minds, and our spirit as we continue to serve one another and the world around us. May this meal be shared with joy, with gratitude, bringing us closer as one ohana under your grace. Imo waho kalu kameka ioka haku Jesu Christo. Amekeloha ke'akoa, ameka launapua, nameka uhanehemolele mea ukopa kahi apau. Amenne, amenne, amenne.
...